So it is now 6:31 PM. So I'm going to go ahead and call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order. For the record, today is Monday, May 3rd, 2021. And the City Hall Auditorium and participating by Zoom participants here at City Hall are Councilwoman Wagner, Councilwoman Rubino, Councilwoman Rowett, Councilman Oliver, and participating by Zoom is Councilman Waldron. And I guess that's it. So with that, we have a quorum. Could we please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am a citizen of the United States of America. I am a citizen of the United States of America.
Thank you. I noticed that Councilman Kevin Arrow has just joined us as well. So jumping right into item number one on the agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to open the public, open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. And seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a department head and a member of the public. Anything you want to add tonight, Jeremy? Nope, you're good. Okay. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held April 19th, 2021.
So moved.
So I heard a motion by Councilwoman Wagner, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Services for the Elderly Commission and authorize the mayor to approve the purchase of a wheelchair accessible van for the assisted medical transportation program from Matthews Buses Commercial of Orlando, Florida, for the expected maximum cost of $66,446 with 80% funding through the Department of Transportation Section 5310 grant program as described in the elderly services director's memo dated April 27, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the elderly services director, IT director, and purchasing agent to award the contract for the installation of a surveillance camera system at the Sullivan Senior Center to Cetronix of Belrika, Mass, for the total amount of $11,769 with funding through donations to the Sullivan Senior Center and authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution of the contract agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on this motion?
No questions. Just a good decision.
Other comments? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the selection committee's recommendation and authorize the mayor to award the contract for the Small Cities Community Development Program Administrator to A&E Services Group LLC of Wocat, Connecticut.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on this?
Yeah, is this a different company?
Yes. So I sent you an email last week, Drake. I wasn't sure if the small, if you wanted to call a Small Cities Committee meeting to order. So what happened is Lisa Low retired. She had been appointed the administrator of the 2018 Small Cities Program. At this point in time, there is approximately $200,000, just a little less than $200,000 left on that grant to be loaned out to families or residents here in the city of Torrington. We contacted the Department of Housing, spoke with them about what to do, got their permission to go back out to bid and see if we can find a replacement consultant. And through that process, received one bid, and that is the A&E Services Group. And you may recognize the name of the principal of this LLC. It is Peter Testa, who worked for a number of years with Larry Wagner and Associates. So we're in good standing with Department of Housing. We have approximately three or four inquiries for loan applications that we can't process without a consultant. And there is one project that has been probably one of our more challenging projects in the Small Cities Program that also needs to be finalized. I can't, is there anything else out there, Dan? It's just those?
No, well, actually, I think we had, there were 10 more applicants.
There are 10, okay.
So hopefully that they'll be able to pick up on that. Now, Mr. Testa, just for some background, he's got 40 years' experience as a contractor, 27 years working with Larry Wagner. He was their construction manager, so quite a bit of experience. Their rate came in actually a little bit less than Lisa Low. So it's actually a win-win for the city. Good, my opinion, anyway.
Is this, can we set a meeting up for, before the next council meeting? Or is that too soon?
To do what?
And we set up a Small Cities Committee meeting before the next council meeting? Or is that too soon?
Not at all. The thing of it is, with Department of Housing, I need to move this consultant forward immediately because the one project that we're working on, it's tenuous day-to-day. It's a property owner that we really need to work with immediately. So unless there's a reason why the council isn't prepared to move on this this evening, what I could suggest is we would ask Mr. Testa to come in and meet with the Small Cities Committee and-
Yeah, if this is, like you said, the pending is crucial. I would make a motion to go forward with that tonight if the other members of the committee agree.
Perfect.
Yeah, I was, I was actually suggest that all the, all the members are here.
Yeah.
Once again, the rate that he's offering to the city is, is actually less than the agreed-upon rate we have with Lisa Low. Lisa Low is getting a 100, she got 12% of the program costs and also $150 an hour for administrative expenses, where Peter Testa's doing that on a per diem basis.
Daily.
He's got three different rates, the highest being $800 per day, per diem. So that's basically an eight-hour day, it'd be $100 an hour. So he has the experience, the rate's good, we've got people that are waiting for this. So I'd urge your support, and then we vote on it tonight if we could.
So is my motion called?
Well, the motion has already been made. Vote to accept the selection committee's recommendation and authorize a mayor to award the contract.
Right, okay.
Other questions? To you, Drake, I know this is a committee you've been on for a number of years. Any other questions you may have?
No, it sounds good. Let's go.
All right. All right, well, if there are no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. And I will ask Peter Testa to meet with the Small Cities Committee and go over the program where we are and next steps.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I want to add one more thing before I move off of this topic. Since Dan was just talking about the program itself, one of the requirements, the new requirements the Department of Housing put on municipalities is that we are required to have a grant, a certified grant administrator within our employment or that is working directly with us. And Dan recently went and has been certified in that. So I just want to extend my gratitude for him, to him for, for doing that.
Congrats.
There was a whole lot of finger pointing, like, do you think you should do that? I think they should do that.
I think he should do that.
I think he should do that.
He was voluntary.
Yeah.
Yes, he did. But I'm grateful that he, yeah. Okay, I'll move on to item six. I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated May 3rd, 2021.
Mayor, may I interrupt on that, please?
Sure.
The, that memo contains a recommendation to release a blight lien as well pursuant to General Statute 7-148AA.
7-148AA?
Yeah.
Okay. So then the amended motion would be to accept Corporation Council's recommendation to authorize a mayor pursuant to CGS Sections 12-179 and Section 7-148AA to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated May 3rd, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated May 3rd, 2021.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rubino. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council acting herein as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated May 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the ordinance subcommittee.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rubino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. And any recommendations from Small-
Yes, we do. We've got a bunch. We would like to set up a public hearing coming forward for discussion or the recommendations regarding the changes to the violent sections of code ordinances in the city of Torrington. Be Chapter 180, snow ice removal from sidewalks, Chapter 128, littering and dumping, Chapter 155, city park hours, rules and regulation violations, Chapter 75, alcoholic liquor, public consumption, Chapter 120, fires and illegal burning, Chapter 145, noise, Chapter 161-1, blight warrants is revision, and also to incorporate new ordinances would be hearing procedures for violations of ordinances and hearing procedures to contest violations imposed under this code.
Oh, second.
Oh, my goodness.
What'd he say?
Okay. So, so the request is to establish a public hearing. Did we want to do that on May 17th? Is, was that the thought?
Whatever's easier for this board.
I think the 17th is that Monday. Of course, you have to do all that when we're going to probably bring the budget forward.
Are you going to send out more detail on this? I wrote down some numbers.
I think it, you know, it sounds like a lot, but it's all-
So we can look at it.
We've had it. We've actually had it sent out for the ordinance. Has that already been sent out before?
Okay.
And we have more to add, so I'm sure. Jonathan, you can send the whole.
I look forward to your email. We're going to send over another.
Well, I think we'll have to send the whole.
At least the ordinance.
I mean, it's this thick.
Yeah. Okay, so the sub-motion to the, motion to consider business is to establish a public hearing on May 17th, 2021 for the laundry list of ordinances as read by the subcommittee chairman. So the motion was made by Councilwoman Rubino, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. You amend the motion to incorporate that request?
Yes.
Questions on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to, is that it for the subcommittee?
Yeah.
That's good. Oh, thank goodness. Okay, so item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department's reports for the month of February and March 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Rubino. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have just a couple of department heads here. Dan, anything to add this evening from the Treasurers Department?
Another certification received.
What's that? Well, that certification, that was, no, the mayor asked me, I agreed. I didn't realize it was 40 hours of classroom and eight to 10 hours of exams. But anyway, I got through it. So now there's only, I think last week I had a four-hour seminar to update, and I have another four-hour seminar next week, so.
That's a full-time job.
You got me good on that one.
I did. Sandbagged keys.
Yeah, sandbag is right. So any, anyway, I just wanted to update the council on what's going on in the Treasurer's Office. Bank of America's got an incredible multimillion-dollar computerized financial program that we use for most of our, our work, and we take advantage of that, and it's highly secure, which is a big benefit to us as well. However, their current interest rate to us is only 0.19%. And with the fees charged by Bank of America and the expenses that we're incurring, we're actually earning no interest. So that caught my attention, and I decided to try and do something about it. Talked to the mayor, I negotiated with several banks, and I was able to work out a deal with Torrington Savings Bank to move a rather large portion of our revenue account into their bank. Their standard rate for a money market account is 0.10%, and they agreed to open one for us at 0.35%, which is an extremely good rate, as you know, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, sir.
It's actually 80% more than we're earning with Bank of America. So it took us about six weeks to finalize it, but the, it's done. The account's totally liquid, so it gives us any flexibility that we need by having immediate access to any funds. And it's also putting our money to work for us. We've also enacted using automatic, automated clearinghouse payments. They're called ACH transfers whenever possible. And by doing this, rather than using what we have over the past few years, we've only worked with wire transfers. But there's a significant savings between the two. The only difference is wire transfers are immediate, but the ACH transfers are next day if they're placed prior to 3 o'clock the previous day. So with that being said, the, for example, Bank of America, for their wires, it's $8 per wire. If we use an ACH transfer, it's 9 cents. Torrington Savings Bank charges $30 for a wire and 15 cents for an ACH. So we're employing ACH transfers whenever we can going forward. That's something new in our office. Also, pleased to announce with, the mayor had reached out to Department of Housing and were approved for an application for a homeless diversion program, which was for $170,000. It's going to be administered by the Support of Housing Works, and we'll actually be paid for the administrative fees that, that we're performing in our office. So kudos to the mayor. Thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Dan this evening?
No. I like seeing keeping our hometown bank in the picture. I think that's, that's really important. And, and also, I know, I appreciate the mayor reaching out for the homeless diversion program because we need that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anything from the City Clerk's Office this evening? Anything from Corporation Council?
No, thank you, ma'am.
All right. We'll move into item 12. I will-
Do you have Joel?
Oh, Joel, I'm sorry. Forgot. I forgot. Hi, Joel. Do you have anything from the Senior Center?
That hurts, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. I forgot there's a screen up there.
No, I, we're, we're good. We're, keep an eye on the newsletter. Council members are all, always welcome down for any of our events. We've got a lot going on, or a lot planned. Mother's Day this Friday, Memorial Day outdoors with a band, and then bands every Wednesday, weather permitting, all summer outside in the parking lot. We did buy some tents and things to get, we have people coming back in as of April 1st, so in cohorted rooms. So we're really moving down there, and things are starting to pick up, and people are really happy about it. So thank you for the opportunity to share that good news, and we'll keep moving forward best we can.
Thank you, Joel. All right. Now I'll move into items, item 12, business by the mayor and members. Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman-
Second.
Wagner, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries, starting on the screen. Anything this evening, Councilman Waldron?
No, nothing from me, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Nothing tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Just wishing Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers here and mothers at home.
Please. Councilwoman Rubino?
I want to thank, for this as far as the ordinance committee is, Corporate Counsel, Vic, for putting together all this information for us, Chief Baldwin, I think it's Sergeant Bison, is it?
Well, this.
Well, this.
Yep.
The, of the Traffic Division. The last three or four meetings have been doing a lot to put this all together, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rowett?
Yeah, just two things. One, can we put on the agenda next time, the public hearing, the change in the, the public hearing timeframe?
Yes. Yes. I was aware that that was a request you made last week, or last meeting, I should say. Jonathan sent me the policy, so we'll go over that, make some recommendations for changes, and bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the other, Veragey is, seems like they are, still have the silt down, and I know they should be doing some plantings, I would imagine, but I think the neighbors are, you know, asking.
Yes.
And whether or not there was, I know that there was some talk about a tax abatement, but just hoping that, I mean, this council and you, ma'am, are vehemently opposed this location, but I want to make sure that we're all alerted in terms of what the request comes in and as it comes in. I know there are people who would definitely speak.
Yes. Yeah. And you're absolutely right. We did recently receive some communication from Veragey with a request to bring forward to the council a request regarding tax abatement. That is all funneled through the Economic Development Director's Office. She was working on the presentation, and I think we'll have that coming before the council at the May 17th meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll wrap that one up pretty quickly, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So is that it? Just those two?
That's it. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, Councilman Oliver?
Nothing tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I have a few things I wanted to just share with the council this evening. First and foremost, I see Joel is, I see Joel's on the line. Hi, Joel. I, Joel sent or notified my office a few weeks ago about some incredible employees who have certainly done a lot of work for a lot of years over at the Sullivan Senior Center, either through the elderly nutrition program, actually both of them, through nutrition, the nutrition program and Meals on Wheels. And we wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge their service to the city. I do have a couple of declarations. I was hoping one or both might have been on the call with us this evening, but I'll go ahead and finish this acknowledgement, and then perhaps, Joel, I can sneak down to the Senior Center and hand deliver these when they're both on-site or around or available. So the first one is to Charles McDonald. I have a declaration presented on behalf of the city of Torrington. On the occasion of your 20th anniversary of service to the city of Torrington and its elderly nutrition/Meals on Wheels program, thank you for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to our city and its residents. You have served Torrington well over the last 20 years. Congratulations on achieving this milestone. And Mr. McDonald has been with us since January 3rd of 2001. Likewise, Florence Winiger has also, I think it must be a lot of fun to work at that Senior Center. Nobody ever wants to leave. Yeah.
It is a lot of fun. I volunteered there. It's a great time. Joel has a great staff, and they do such wonderful work. Sorry, Joel.
So, so for Florence, the same, her date of hire was March 26th, 2001. So on the occasion of her 20th, the anniversary of service to the city, and again, the elderly nutrition and Meals on Wheels program, in appreciation for her hard work and dedication, she certainly has served the city of Torrington well over that 20-year period of time. So I have both of these, and I'll bring them down to you, Joel, so we can share the official documents.
Thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate the acknowledgement for them. We also have an employee, Dan Coleman, who hasn't worked since COVID started, but he's got about 29 years in. So he's been a Meals on Wheels driver for that long, and Charlie is our next longest-running driver. And he keeps threatening to retire every winter, but he makes it through. So we hope he keeps on driving. And Flo has been our, our site manager. She started off in the kitchen preparing the meals and doing dishes and things like that, and ended up our site manager. So she's been there for 20 years as well. So you're right, it is a fun place to work, and I think it's all because of their boss.
I'm sure you're right.
Clearly.
Kerry does a great job. So the other thing that I wanted to share with the, with the board is I wanted to let you know that we had a retirement in our building department. Brett Zeritis retired, was it almost two weeks ago? 10 days ago? He retired on, his final day was Friday, April, yeah, April 20, 20th, I think, 22nd? So at this point, we are working with an interim building official. Kevin Gillette is, he was our newest, most recent hire, I should say. He is a building official certified, and we will be working with him for, for, with a transition plan for that department. Obviously, with so much that's going on with real estate in the city of Torrington, this is one department that we really can't afford to have vacancies in. So our plan is to work with Kevin over the next couple of weeks and transition that department, maybe even do a little bit of restructuring to create a more cohesive interdepartmental inter-operations with our land use office, our building office, and our economic development office. So, so that is just a heads-up kind of thing. And then the last- And then the last thing I wanted to advise the board of, it doesn't require any board action. It's just a notification that we will be transitioning our parking meter system, which is currently a combination of kiosk and coin-operated parking meters into an electronic payment program. We will be working with Park Mobile. They will be developing an app for all the smartphone users. And the apps will interface with the ancient infrastructure that we already have. They're able to retrofit some kind of digital sticker on the parking meters. So moving into the 21st century when it comes to parking management, again, there's no cost to the city. The app charges are to the user, and the parking meter charges will not change. So I guess with that, I see no further business before the board, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Waldron. I heard Councilwoman Rowett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Good.